I'd like to call public session of January 21st Board of Education meeting to order. And we have no action coming out of executive session. And I would like to change the order of the board, actually has agreed to this, change the order of the agenda slightly so that we have Mr. Kane's recognition first. I'll turn it over to Dr. Pedlen.
Thank you, Mrs. Chair. Today we would like to thank Mr. Len Kane for his service on behalf of the Board of Education. I want to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Len Kane and give recognition to him for his lengthy and tireless service to the students of the Kingston City School District and the students of Ulster County. Mr. Kane has served the Ulster BOSI's Board of Education since 1983. Prior to that, he served the Kingston City School District for five years on the Board of Education, holding the office of President and Vice President. Mr. Kane has continued to be a strong supporter and believer in public education. His ever-present support for our schools has been greatly appreciated throughout the county. In the short time that I've gotten to know Mr. Kane, who always tells me to call him Len when I call him Mr. Kane, he's been a voice of reason and understanding. He's had his clear grasp on the challenges that we face here in public education, and he's been an advocate for our teachers, our staff, our administrators, and our students. So we greatly appreciate all of the service that he's done, and I know he's collected hefty paychecks for all of this work. We thank him for his service to our community, and we thank him for his commitment to education. Thank you, Mr. Kane.
The board just made a terrible mistake. They handed me a microphone. The first four songs that I'm going to do tonight. I do thank you. I thank you, Superintendent. You have accomplished a great deal since you've been here. And it was right in this room that I first met you. We were doing a BOSI's presentation, not BOSI's, a budget presentation for the former board. And you did not disappoint. You did a beautiful job. Thank you for the job you're doing as President. Camille, you stay in that office, don't you leave? And if things get tough, you have two ministers who'll bail you out. Bless you all. It's been a pleasure to be on both boards. Thank you.
Okay, now I'd like to introduce the principal, Valerie Hanna, with the principals welcome.
Hello, everyone. Welcome to the George Washington School. At this time, I'd just like to let my staff take over. They seem to know better than I what to do. So I'm going to hand it to them right now. And they have the clicker and all the information they need. So here they go. Hi, thank you all for coming. My name is Erin Luby, and I am a children's house guide. Our children's house is our combined pre-K and kindergarten. I'm sorry, mic's not my forte. Okay. Is that better? Great, thank you. Thank you all for coming. My name is Erin Luby, and I'm a teacher in the children's house. Our children's house here at George Washington is a combined kindergarten and pre-K program. The children's house is the foundation of our school. Our students work toward mastery of grade-level district and common core standards, and we achieve this through hands-on lessons and Montessori works. We have individual works for students to self-select or to help with guidance from a teacher or teaching assistant so that students can practice and refine newly introduced skills or skills that just need some brushing up. Our students are taught from their very first days with us to be independent learners and members of our community. Because of this, as a teacher, I'm allowed to spend lots of time in small group settings and individual work with children. This allows me to really work towards getting RTI running in the classroom. You can be there to really help children to move along quickly. This implementation, I've seen great success with this year, so it's been fabulous. We also, at the other end, have a curriculum that continues to move up. Our students who've already mastered district and state and common core standards are able to continue on in their educational pursuit. They don't have to stop once they can master that one to 10. We can keep them going. We can introduce things that they might not see until future years had they been in a traditional setting. I want to leave everyone with an invitation to please come and visit. My room is always open down at the bottom of the steps. I'd love to answer questions, and I know we're a little short on time tonight. So thank you for understanding my brevity.
Hi, I'm Felipa Goddard, and I teach in the elementary one. I'm supposed to coordinate both of these things. We'll see how well I do. So I'm an elementary one teacher, so that's grades one through three here at George Washington. And I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the new things we've been doing in E1, we call it E1, this year. So this picture is a little boy, and he has a work plan in our classroom. So we've been using Montessori Records Express, which is an online software system where we can, as Erin had mentioned, Montessori is very individualized. So we can take whatever lessons we've given to the children and put into the system how well they did. So if they've mastered the lesson, or if they're working on the lesson, they need more practice, we can put that into the system. And everyone's been doing this in E1, and a few of us have been kind of experimenting with the software a little bit and making work plans from that. So if they need more practice, then that shows up on their work plan. So their work plans are 100% individualized for the student, which is really exciting. Another thing we've been working on is student self-assessment rubrics. So where's, children can really, you know, think about the work that they've been doing. So on the left side of that page is really the back part of a work plan in my classroom. And so you can see the self-reflection piece. And so we've been using Marvin Marshall's Levels of Discipline. So if a student is level D or C, that's democracy or cooperation. Level B is, you know, bossing or bullying. And level A is anarchy. So we really want to keep those kids in D or C, and they want to be there also. But it's really been nice for them to think about, you know, their level, how focused they are, what their work choice has been like. And so we've all incorporated some sort of self-reflection through the Montessori work plan or at the end of a week. So different classes are doing it differently. Then another thing we've used have been writing rubrics. So whenever the students finish a piece of writing, they then evaluate their own writing. And it's actually been really wonderful to see the children critically reflect on their work and then start to push themselves in different ways based on their reflections. Another new initiative in E1 this year, two teachers, Julie Cash and Nicole Zalaki, went to the Hudson Valley Writing Project over the summer at SUNY New Paltz. And they brought back an amazing, like plethora of different writing projects for the kids to do. This is an example of one. It's a puppet show, and so this little girl read a biography on Amelia Earhart. As she was reading it, she pulled out her atlas and started her puppet show. This is what she did on her own, which was really wonderful. After she's done with her puppet show, you know, she made her puppets. And then I read her story to the class. And then the children asked questions, which were just fabulous. So it's a great way for them to, you know, building content learning in a way that's really fun. And the questions that come out and the answers that come out through the process are just wonderful. I also would like to extend an invitation if anyone would love to see an E1 classroom in progress. There's lots of us. Our doors are always open, but you're always welcome in my room. Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Gribbin, general education teacher here at George Washington Montessori. I teach E1 as well, so that's for second and third grade in the co-teaching model. This is my co-teacher, Alyssa Hafer.
I'm the special education teacher in the classroom, and Jenny and I started working together two years ago when the co-teaching model was set into place. And fortunately, we've been able to adapt the model to our Montessori program, and it works very nicely.
What you're seeing here on the screen is our classroom, and it's trying to show how both of us are working in smaller groups. We do a writer's workshop in the morning, and I also do a language group as well. And then we come together, we do a morning meeting, group lessons, and then we break into our work plan, and we do individual lessons and small group lessons throughout the whole day. It's been really advantageous for us to have each other the entire school day. I know that's different in certain areas, but it's been wonderful for us, having three grade levels as well really makes a huge difference. It's an integrated setting. It's a truly integrated setting, having the three grade levels. And I've seen incredible benefits for all of our students, but namely even our students with disabilities. It's been really wonderful. They're not singled out. We work with everyone, we help each other, and we help the students to learn on a daily basis. It's been a really wonderful experience. Oh, this just shows more of our schedule in the morning in our classroom. So thank you. And invitation extended as well, if you want to come into our classroom too.
And I know Jenny was speaking about how the integrated setting really benefits the special education students, but it also benefits any of the students going through the RTI process. I'm in there the entire day, which is wonderful because I can touch base with any of the students that are in tier one, tier two, tier three, and I can do the small group, I can do one-on-one with them. So if you're looking at, that's a picture of our classroom, Jenny's on the one side in a math group, and on the other side, I'm with a group of students, not necessarily all classified. Even though I'm the special ed teacher, I do address the needs, but also any of the RTI needs or the students I'll pull in here or there to address their needs. It's really been a pleasure. I mean, we've become quite a team, and it's been, it's been very successful over the past two years. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Michael Pettit. I'm an E1 teacher, along with Ms. Linda, who's up here with me. I worked this summer taking our Montessori math map that has the Common Core goals and really pulling it apart in order to show the three levels being done at one time. And by three levels, the three grade levels all at one time, working side by side, co-working, co, kind of learning where it was brought up earlier, if somebody's a little bit further along in the curriculum than another student at the same grade level, they may move because that's where their understanding is at. Having paper and pencil, the manipulatives, and the Montessori method all working similarly. So in each of the three pictures, there are children in different grade levels but similar abilities, working alongside of each other, talking, working in small group, near myself, near my teaching assistant. Throughout our day, we stratify based on where the children are at and their abilities. It has been an absolute pleasure and joy to put forth in this work, to see it blossom in each child and in the events that happen throughout the year. Linda?
Hi, I'm Ms. Linda. I'm the RTI teacher here in math. And we've talked about RTI a little bit with all the different teachers that have been up here. So what I end up doing is I work with the tier two and tier three children. And if you look at the pictures up here, the first group, I'm working with the ELL students. They do not speak much English right now. So for me to get them interested and working, I have to bring out like the toys, which would be my matchbox and my Legos. So we work on things like that. So I give them the question, and then they lay it all out. In the second picture, I'm working with a group of students that are higher level, so I don't need to focus on the skills at the same way. So I have to kind of do more paper and pencil with them and try to get them ready for the state exam. So I work in the classroom, and I also pull students out. Thank you.
And I'm also open to having any visitors or invitations. Please, and thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Carol Matthews-Kinnon. And Linda Brodmann, we're the ENL teachers here in George Washington. ENL is the new acronym for ESL, English as a New Language. And we bring the children content into the classrooms to make it more comprehensible for them to bring English and learn English through content. And you're going to see a slide where we actually do a hands-on activity using vocabulary hands-on and teaching them through this activity.
And you'll notice in this activity that we are focusing on the four basic tenets of ESL, ENL, reading, writing, listening, and speaking. The background to the project they were able to do was the listening and the reading that they did. And then during the project, you'll see the writing and the speaking. And you can come to our classrooms.
Twenty-five people lived in a long house. The elder was in charge. The Iroquois lived near trees, wood, and water to survive, and near animals to hunt and to wear their fur. The Iroquois lived in New York. The Iroquois lived near river, wood, and animal to drink water. The Iroquois built their long house in spring, summer, and fall, not winter because the ground will be frozen. The Iroquois used branches, wood, bark, sapling, and crossbow to make their long house. The Iroquois have inside its compartment fire pit basket, and the corn was hanging from the roof because it can get warm because it was winter. We use hay, twine, scissors, clippers, and branches to make a long house. The Iroquois children played papa seek away.
Good evening. I'm Bonnie Lawler. I'm a teaching assistant here at GW. And in the GW atmosphere, we call it a co-guide, and this is Alice.
Yes, hello. I'm Alice Frantam, teaching assistant for Kingston City Schools, and I'm a Montessori co-guide here at George Washington. Guides and co-guides work together in the Montessori model.
It enables both small and small group and individual lessons in a multi-age classroom. For us, we both work in an E1 classroom, which, for those who don't know, is grade one, two, and three. Thank you.
We tried to make it brief. We hope it is. And just to say at the end, we certainly appreciate you took the time to listen to us. This is an example of our piece rows and how we work out difficulties and problems and solve, solve our problems with each other. The children talk about their problems through the piece rows, and they also do a self-evaluation for behavior. So we really work on that sense of community, that sense of self-reflection, because as we're, as we grow into be adults, the importance of reflecting on how we do is important in life. And finally, some of the things that we do in our community, we do a walking school bus two days a week up to Henry and Broadway and back, and all weather. You see Mr. Tom there slipping on the ice. And we do sometimes have to walk in the street because the sidewalks are not shoveled, and they are very icy. And we have celebrations, just ENL celebrations, Hispanic community celebrations. We do try to bring the community in a lot. They're very much part of our school. We're very fortunate to be so culturally diverse, and we thank heavens that we are because it's great for children to grow up in a culturally diverse environment. We have a partnership across the way with the Hudson Valley Senior Residents, and our children go over and visit them, which has been great for them as well. And in short, thank you so much for listening to us, and have a wonderful evening. I hope it's not too long, and we appreciate your coming. Thank you. And you're always welcome. Sound like a...
And now we've reached the portion of our meeting for public participation. Just wanted to ask you that you speak directly into the microphone. We have a two-minute limit. Ms. DePerna will let you know when you're approaching the two minutes. It's not a conversation with the board. It's an opportunity to express concerns. So for anyone who signed up for public comment.
Good evening. I'm here today, I wanted to let you know that CAFE is joining parents and teachers around the state in the following resolution. Whereas the purpose of education is to educate a populace of critical thinkers who are capable of shaping a just and equitable society in order to lead good and purpose-filled lives and not solely prepare that populace for college and career. And whereas instructional and curricular decisions should be in the hands of classroom professionals who understand the context and interests of their students. And whereas the education of children should be grounded in developmentally appropriate practice. And whereas high-quality education requires adequate resources to provide a rich and varied course of instruction, individual and small group attention, and wraparound services for students. And whereas the state assessments are not transparent in that teachers and parents are not allowed to view the test, an item analysis will likely not be made available. And whereas the assessment practices that accompany Common Core state standards, including the political manipulation of test scores, are used as justification to label enclosed schools, fail students, and evaluate educators. Therefore, be it resolved that CAFE opposes standardized high-stakes testing that is currently pushed by the federal and state governments because this testing is not being used to further instruction for children, to help children, or to support the educational needs of children. And be it further resolved that CAFE advocates for an engaged and socially relevant curriculum that is student-based and supported by research. And be it further resolved that CAFE joins New York State Allies for Public Education in lobbying the New York State Board of Education to eliminate the use of high-stakes testing. And be it further resolved that CAFE will encourage all of Kingston City School District's parents to have their own children refuse to take grade 338 assessments. And be it further resolved that CAFE will encourage other parent groups in Ulster County to increase opposition to high-stakes testing. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution will be sent to the New York State Board of Education, the governors of New York State, and all members of the United States Legislative Branch. We wanted to let you know about this. We hope that the board and the administrators will support the parents who join CAFE in this refusing the test as you have done in past years. And then you might even consider joining people in this conscientiousness of objection. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anybody else? Public participation? Okay, then if there's no one else who's interested in making any public comment now, I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Catalino and begin with the superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Chair. As the first thing on the superintendent's report was recognition of Mr. Kane, which we've done before already. I'm going to jump down to the third thing before I move on to the Star Club with Mr. Reinhardt and just give a quick capital project update. To let you know, last week, we did do the final bidding for our summer work, for the 2015 work. This is work that was approved by the voters in May of 2013. So we did last three summers. This will be the next summer that we'll be finishing that. So we had 40 total bidders for that work. $4.7 million are to be expended in summer work as approved by the voters. 3.5, just to give you kind of a breakdown of those bidders, $3.5 million of that $4.7 million was awarded to Union Shop bidders, which is 75% of the bids were awarded to Union Shops. And 50% of all of the vendors awarded these bids were either women or minority-owned businesses. To give you an update on where we are with the Second Century Capital Project, the Field House has been submitted to the state. We've received some mechanical and architectural questions back from, comments back from the State Education Department. They're working with our architectural firm to finish, to fix those problems and address those concerns and answer those questions. The remainder of the project is going to be submitted to the state on Friday, so that the entire, the entire campus, Kingston High School campus outside of the Field House, which was already submitted. We continue to work with the State Education Department on the preliminary building aid units, or BAUs, you've heard us talk about a lot, for the project. Several questions have come back from the state from our preliminary conversations with, that they've had with the blueprints, and we've responded to most of them and responded to a few more. There were some clarifications sought last week on the 14th when our architects communicated with the State Education Department, so we were providing that. Some of that had, those questions had come back to the building level, so it's programmatic questions for our, for our principals, for Mr. Reinhardt and his, and his team. Some of them were district-level questions that we are answering, and some of them were questions for the, for our construction management team, which they are answering. So we are making our final submission on Friday, hopefully with all our questions answered from the State Education Department. We'll wait, and then we'll hear back from the state hopefully quickly. Again, this has been a slow pace. My conversation with our architects, even, we all thought this has been extremely slow pace, but we're hoping to get the answers back quickly. And what we're really looking for is the approval on our initial estimate for the building aid units. And we want to make sure that we are on the same page as the State Education Department to ensure that we maximize the state aid on this project. Right now, with our preliminary conversations, we feel that we're very close with the BAUs, so we're, so we're pleased going back up there. Going back up there, if we can answer any of these questions that were posed to us last week, we'll bring us even closer. So it's a back-and-forth process. We're going through this for a little while, but we're still confident that that April Day for shovels in the ground will be accomplished. Any questions?
Do we have an owner's representative?
An owner's representative, as far as...
For the building, for the capital project.
Well, I think we have our building management, construction management team, and we have our head of buildings and grounds, and Mr. Olson and myself, of course. But we don't have clerk of the works, is that what you're...
Yeah.
No.
Is that standard for these projects?
Some places it is, some places it's not. I think we have the capacity to do that ourselves within-house, so we're confident not hiring outsiders for that, and also with BBL as the construction management team.
Any other questions?
Okay. Thank you. And the next thing on the superintendent's report is Mr. Reinhardt, Principal of Kingston High School. He has some guests with him, and we'll talk about the Star Club program at Kingston High.
Good evening, Board of Education, and Dr. Catalino. Thank you, Mr. Olson. First, I want to thank you for allocating the time for us to have our presentation tonight at the Star Club, presented by the gentleman behind me. One of the district goals was health, safety, and leadership, and I truly believe that what we need to do for a lot of our students is give them opportunities to lead. I think when people get an opportunity, they will rise to the occasion, and I think this is a great chance for a lot of our young people to be part of something, be part of a team, to learn those skills, and to be given those opportunities to be in leadership positions that are only going to help them when they leave high school. So once again, I want to thank you ahead of time for giving me the time. And with that, I would like to introduce, we have Sergeant First Class Javier, we have Captain Gudan, and the one doing the presentation is going to be Staff Sergeant Palanca. Thank you.
Can I take this thing over? Do it over here so I can click through it. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Mr. Superintendent. Thank you for allowing me the chance to come out here and speak to you about the Star Program and how we'd like to help out the students in Kingston High School with a leadership role. So without further ado, I'm going to go through and cover it with you guys. As you can see, I've given you each a folder. It has a slide presentation in there, so you can follow along with me. I've also given you pens, so you can take down notes, so you can ask questions at the end of this if you would like, so we can get through it as quickly as possible. All right, the first thing, the purpose of this is we're going to provide an overview, the US Army Star Club, how we can help with a partnership with the Kingston High School to provide students with a leadership and some character development. As Mr. Reinhardt said, that's one of the main goals of the school, the school system, is they'd like to provide leadership for the students to help them achieve greater goals and successes in life once they leave high school, you know, going to college, jobs, everything like that. All right, the concept, it's just a partnership between the US Army, the local recruiting office, or the army liaisons, if you will, and the high school. All we really require from the high school is a teacher to come sit in with us while we provide the instruction for the students, a classroom at the school, and just support from the school to show that they accept us coming there and actually helping the students out. The Star Club participation, you know, this is like life skills, leadership, facilitate life skills, leadership, and responsible citizenship. It'll be a school-sanctioned club, as long as the school board approves it. The army administrators will be administering the club programs, so we'll be the ones facilitating the teaching, instructing the students, providing them with the leadership they need. The main basis of this program is it goes along the lines of a junior reserve officer training corps program, as most high schools down south have. But the thing with this program compared to a junior ROTC is the school is not required to provide any funding or anything, except for a teacher for us to assist with the program. You don't have to pay for uniforms, you don't have to pay for all the drilling ceremonies, equipment, anything like that. All you provide for us is a teacher, we provide the teaching, we would bring all the equipment that we would need to teach, and we'd also provide physical fitness to help the students stay in shape, so they can be better active members in their society. The main foundation of this is going to be our leadership acronym, which is loyalty, duty, respect, selfless service, honor, integrity, and personal courage. We in the Army take that to heart because we feel that is a baseline to make a great soldier, and it also is a baseline to make a great human being. Because if you follow these seven values right here, then you'll be a great person, you'll be a good helper, and a good person to help out in your society, and a good helper in your city. We're basically going to provide programs of instruction to the soldiers, or the army recruiters. We'll provide the structure, supervision, and mentorship. A faculty advisor or teacher is going to be within the school. They're going to provide a point of contact, and they're going to provide oversight to make sure we're not going above and beyond what we said we would do for the program, and also to make sure that we're not actively recruiting or trying to enlist the individuals in the program into the US Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, any Coast Guard, anything like that. All we're there for is just to provide a type of leadership for the students. We're not there to actively recruit and put them in the military, just so you guys are aware of that. The sample topics, non-military, we're just basically going to do time management, some study skills and strategies to help them with test-taking, values-based leadership to go along with the leadership, loyalty, duty, respect, selfless service, honor, integrity, and personal courage, goal-setting, problem-solving, bully prevention intervention, public speaking, some personal finance help, proper care and display of the flag, disaster preparedness, career exploration, which we can do based off the Armed Services Vocational Aptitude Battery Test. We have a career explorer portion of that program, which the school provides the test to the students. We come in and we help them explore what type of careers they could do, army, outside of the army, in the real world, to help them determine what type of skills they actually find within themselves after they've taken the test. We also provide some basic, you know, first-aid-type skills, because we have individuals that are certified to do CPR and things like that, so we can teach the kids in the class as well, some basic first-aid skills. Some of the military-related topics, because it is sort of a military program, and we're going to run it kind of like a JRTC. It's going to have the club president, vice president, secretary, but they're going to be holding ranks like they were in the military, so it'll be a commander, first sergeant, staff sergeant, XO. So we'll teach them the history of the army, some army values, the leadership acronym. Military time, because when we tell them something, a time for a thing, we're going to tell it to them in military time, because that's how we're going to base it off of. Going to give them basic drilling ceremonies, and as I was telling Mr. Reinhardt, if we get more schools involved in this, later on, we're going to try to pitch it to other schools as well, and if more schools go along with it, we're going to try to set up a drilling ceremonies competition between the schools, and then the best school will be awarded with plaques they can hang up alongside all the other trophies they receive for football and other sporting events. We're also going to provide them training on the military ranks, structure, do physical fitness, either at the school or down at DEET Stadium, running, and push-ups, things like that, just to keep them motivated and keep them, you know, exercised. We're going to give them basic land navigation training to help them, so in case they get lost somewhere, they can find their way back. And we're just going to do a little bit of phonetic alphabet, military customs and courtesies, you know, saluting, standing at the right position when you're speaking to a person of a higher rank, things like that as well. The co-curricular activities, we're going to do community service projects. I know the students in the high school have to do a certain amount of community service hours in order to graduate for certain classes, things like that. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to connect with the Veteran Services Administrator and SUNY Ulster, and he's going to give us the chance to do some community service, helping out in the veterans' homes, helping out in the other homes around the community, things like that, so we can get them their community service hours, so they have the hours they need, so they can pass the classes without having to go search and find that community service. We'll also do, as I said, public speaking, drilling ceremony competitions, if we can get schools involved, leadership reaction courses. We'll do some awards banquets, if we do the, the drilling ceremonies to award the individuals or the schools, you know, for doing such a good job. Do physical fitness, we'll do sporting events, we'll do some movie days, some military history current events. We'll also do fundraisers, because the main part of a club is you do fundraisers to gain funds, so that the club can either purchase outfits, they can do trips, things like that. We'll also do trips, or we'll take them to West Point, take them around to see the museums at West Point, take them to some other areas that they might be interested in, basically whatever the students would like to go see in the area, we can try to schedule a field trip, take them to go see some military-type things. The provided club resources, soldier involvement mentorship, so me and the other individuals I work with in my station will come out, we'll provide the leadership, we'll provide the training, the classes, things like this. We'll also provide online tutoring. We have a program, it's called March to Success. It provides help with taking the SAT test, ACT test, and any other scholastic-type test to help them advance and go on to graduate and head off to do college and bigger and better things that they want to do. We'll do sponsor competitions, and we're going to provide T-shirts for the individuals. It's just going to have a little army logo on it, it's the same one we provide to the individuals that come do training with us at our station, and they'll just wear that when they come to the club meeting, or when they do the physical fitness training after school, not during the school time, so it's not considered active recruiting, and it won't get anyone in trouble. All we require from the schools, as I stated, we'll just need a faculty advisor to come in during the afternoons for that one hour, we'll be doing it. We're going to try to do it two times a week if possible, just need an advisor to come in during that hour-long process. We'll need a meeting location, just a classroom in the school where we can meet, go over everything. You know, if we're going to do physical fitness, we'll just go out to DEET Stadium, and then we'll just need, as I said, faculty school recognition and support, just showing that you recognize that we're doing something good for the school, and that you support us in what we're trying to do to help better the lives of the students at the school, so they don't end up just coming out of school, not going to college, or dropping out of school in general. What we don't do is we don't require a service obligation, so if they join the program, they're not required to go join the armed forces. They're just required to come do the club as any other student at the school would do the club. We don't recruit for the armed forces. We are recruiters, but we're not going to recruit. All we're there for is to help lead the students in the right path, make sure they're doing the right things, make sure there's not going to be any bullying, make sure, you know, the kids have everything they need to be successful once they graduate. And then we're not going to conduct combat skills training, because that's bad. Basically, club eligibility is going to be any student with a commitment to academic excellence, willingness to do their best, and a desire to be part of a team can participate in the Star Club. The continued eligibility is based off the same requirements that the school would provide, so if any kid wanted to do any schools, be it the, you know, student government, or just some regular club, like Interact, anything like that, they'd have to meet the same requirements that they would have to meet for the Star Club. So they'd have to maintain their GPA, they'd have to not have missed so many days of school, you know, not be a student that's, you know, beating up other kids, things like that. They have to meet all the basic requirements, otherwise they can't participate in the school program. It promotes personal growth. We're going to give them leadership skills, we're going to provide them with discipline. We're going to teach them how to solve problems using their mind, not their fists. We're going to teach them personal pride, responsibility. We're going to teach them how to be self-confident, self-aware, so they can feel better about themselves, so they think they are a meaningful person in society. They don't just think, hey, I'm just another stepping stone for someone to walk over. I am someone, I am there to help and make a difference in someone else's life and my own. We're going to provide them with teamwork, help them with self-respect, professionalism, and teach them time management, because I know kids these days, they just wake up whenever they want to wake up and do whatever they want to do anytime. So we're going to try to help set that straight, so they can actually show up and do things in a timely manner, and get things done in a timely manner, so they can, you know, go on and do, as I stated before, bigger and better things, graduate, and become a productive member of society. Tactical benefits to the school, student engagement, sense of belonging, student leadership, community involvement, doing community service projects. Tutor program, we can help tutor the kids if they need help in math or things like that. We have recruiters that are very good at math, recruiters that are good in English. Most of the recruiters in my office are taking college-level classes right now, so they can help, you know, with the basic, you know, high school classes. We also can provide information on STEM-related internship opportunities, senior project credit if the school approves it, and a source of additional manpower for special events for the school. If they have anything they need assistance with, we can come in, in the capacity of being just concerned citizens, not active military individuals trying to do something for our own good. We're there to help you with your good, and help provide for the greater good of the school. Strategic benefits, increased retention, because if the kids are part of a club that they enjoy, they're going to want to show up at school so they can continue to participate in that club. Raise test scores, because we're going to provide tutoring, going to provide access to websites, so they can get more training and more tutoring on certain tests that they would have to take in order to graduate. Provide positive role models, support and facilitate post-secondary planning, help meet graduation timelines, and save money, maximize the budget, because all we'd require is, as I stated, a teacher, a classroom, and support. If you have any questions, my phone number and everything's on the back page here, and I'm open to take any questions that you guys might have.
Yes, sir. So this will, this program will take place during the activity period, the night period, mostly?
It'll be happening during the afternoon time, after the school's already done. They're not going to be, not going to be taking time out of their classes to participate in the club, the same as any other school club would do. They have a meeting in the afternoon for about an hour, so it doesn't take away from the kids participating in any sport activities, anything like that. They have that one hour, school gets out around 2:30, will meet from probably 2:30, 3:30. They can go right to do their practice, anything else they need to do. Just go right on and continue about their day of life, so they can just have the time to learn a little bit of leadership, and then go off and translate that leadership into becoming a better part of that football team, that basketball team, that baseball team, so they can become better leaders and help lead that team into doing better and greater things for the school as a whole.
And I presume this is nondiscriminatory in terms of sex...
Anybody, anybody can do it, sir. We don't, it doesn't matter if you're male, female. It doesn't matter what you, what you want to do, you can come down, and as long as you meet the requirements the school puts forward for you to participate in a club, you can participate in our club, we have no issue.
Okay. Good.
Yes, ma'am.
So I had a similar participation question, but so it's for, it's open to all grade levels?
From ninth grade up to 12th grade. We're just doing it for the high school.
Right, right, that's what I meant.
So it'll be open for all grade levels. The way we base the leadership is we do it as the main, the main leadership, like the commanders, the first sergeants, the people in top ranks, the top level, as you will, would be the upperclassmen, the seniors and the juniors, and then the ninth graders and 10th graders would start at the bottom, and then they'd have the chance to work their way up to the upper positions, because we want the seniors and juniors, the ones that have been in the school the longest, they, they know a little bit more about how, how things will work in the school, so they can make a better representative for the students as a, hey, this is, you know, what right looks like, so we can make it, you know, work their way up. And then once the kids in ninth and 10th grade, they start working their way up, they'll be the ones that'll take the leadership positions once the time comes for them to fit into that position, if that makes sense.
It does. So how many students can you accommodate at once, though?
We can basically do as, as many as, as would like to come. We haven't really set a goal of how many, you know, we'd like to participate, how many we can actually accommodate. We want to see how many actually show up and want to actually participate in the program, and we'll go from there. The way it breaks down is we're going to break it down just like you would a active army unit, so it would have a battalion commander, the guy in charge of the whole group, and a battalion sergeant major, a battalion XO. So they'd be the club president, the club vice president, the club secretary, the club treasurer. And then we'd break it down as, we have companies, if, depending on how many kids we have, we'd have to break it down into companies, where each company would have a commander and a first sergeant, and then they'd break the companies down into squads, so each squad would have a squad leader and a squad, a squad sergeant in charge of them.
To answer your question, as far as how many students we're going to facilitate, it's kind of like Sergeant Long said, it's based off the amount of interest. I mean, obviously, if it's a student Sergeant Long could handle by himself, then it would just be Sergeant Long to allocate. If we need to have more soldiers come in and help out, then obviously, I would have Sergeant Javier, that dude would go and participate in this program, and we'd be able to help you guys out. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. And then can students come in and out over the course of a year, or do they, like, once you're in?
It works just like any other club. I mean, if they want to come into the club, they can come in and participate in the club. Say they don't want to do it anymore, they don't like how, how the club works, they can leave, and then they change their mind later, they want to come back in, they can come back in. We're not going to make it where if you come in, you have to stay, it's, it's all-inclusive, you can't leave. We're making it, hey, if it's something you want to do, come try it out, you like it, you can stay, you know, as long as you want to. If you don't like it, it, no skin off my back, really, you can come back anytime you want to try it. If you just want to come for the days we do the physical training and just work out with us, you can come for that. If you want to come for the days, for the classes, you can come for that. It's, it's whatever the student feels like. We're not going to pressure them one way or the other, because basically, all we're there for is just to help the students make, make better decisions and help make them into better individuals for when they graduate.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm all for providing opportunities, especially academic opportunities for our students, so I thank you for that. But my question regarding some specifics along the lines of the online tutoring, the dropout prevention, the career exploration, I assume that that would be done in concert with maybe guidance, or at least that they're aware, up to speed, so you could work together on that?
Yes, the tutoring and the career exploration, which goes along with the Armed Services Vocational Aptitude Battery Test, I explained, that's all stuff that guidance would, would request for the school. So we could provide the tutoring, if they need tutoring, we could provide tutoring after school in the class. We could have the students talk to guidance, say, hey, I could use a little help with this class or this class. talk to guidance, say, "Hey, I could use a little help with this class or this class." And if they're in the club, we can provide it, help. If they're not in the club, we can still provide help if they need it. We also would come out for the career exploration. What we do is they take the ASVAB test based off when the school would do it, and we'd come out and what we do is called interpretation where we'd show the kids, you know, we'd basically break down everything with them in a book that's provided after they take the test. They make little tally marks in there for different parts of, you know, how they feel about different things, and it determines what type of job they could do, whether it be a creative job, a workforce job, different things like that. And they determine based off what their interests are, what type of jobs they'd be interested in doing once they graduated from high school.
Yes, we'd work in concert with school administration.
Thank you. Can I follow up? So you don't have any of these clubs established in any local Ulster County schools?
We have, we have something similar to this, ma'am, than Pine Bush High School. I know Principal Reinhardt, he works with Principal Hotmire. I know you folks are familiar with the, the Rondusian Academy due out there every summer. Again, I'm the commanding officer for those guys, so we've done similar programs like this in other schools, and they've seen significant success rates as far as reducing their dropout rate and also seriously reducing their discipline problems as well. I mean, again, if you folks are interested, I can always arrange for Principal Hotmire to come in here and talk about that at a later date. But to answer your question, yes, we do this in other schools, not in here.
Some of us were at the board meet, the, um, one of them in Rochester, the school board associations, and we actually attended a presentation that he put on. And I preface my comments by saying I'm all for opportunities for students, teacher, myself. But I just have to go there because I know that sometimes in Ulster County, having worked in an Ulster County high school where there was a perception of the military coming into the school, and I know you've been very clear in saying there's no recruitment, I'm just wondering if that's something that you've encountered, any kind of reluctance?
The only other schools I've, I've brought this up to so far is Rondell High School out in Rondell Valley. And he said, and the principal told me he was okay with it and the superintendent was okay with it. They wanted to know how it went with the school board presentation here, and then they would determine how they wanted to go about it. They said they wanted to make sure, you know, if, if you guys were okay with it, they'd be okay with it, and then it might end up in a trickle effect. But the individual I got the program from, he's another recruiter from another battalion up in Minnesota. He's actually running this program right now in four of his high schools, and it's working very well down there. It's increased, increased the retention of the students, increased the grades, everything like that, and they keep it coming and it keeps growing more and more every year.
Thank you very much. I ask that with respect. I just felt like it needed to be asked.
It's, it's not a problem, ma'am. Yes, sir.
And I presume you're going to make a, a long, a long-term commitment to this?
If, if we-
A multi-year commitment so that-
If we get it fixed, oh, sorry.
It has an opportunity to, for enthusiasm and participation to grow-
Yes, sir.
-because it might not be what you, you know, it might be, I don't know how, whatever it is, it'll be, but-
Sir, as long as the students are interested in the program, we'll continue to support it as far as I'm concerned.
Okay.
If this guy takes orders from me, and so does my boss. So if somebody else writes, he says, "Stop it," we're going to continue to support the program.
Okay, great.
I just, I actually would like to hear from Mr. Reinhardt. If you could talk a little bit about how you see this in the context of the high school and kind of what your hopes are for this kind of program?
Well, I guess the way I see it is we'll do it during our activity period. I see it growing, and I, and I appreciate Mr. Shaughnessy's comment. I think it's one of those things that's going to need to grab legs because the biggest advocate that I see for this is the leadership opportunities. We have a lot of students in our school that I see all the time that I know there's leadership inside of them, but they're not our traditional student that is going to be in the honor society or whatever. You know, they're just really good kids who just need a chance to lead. And I, and I think I see the commitment being, you know, we start with a group, but you really don't lead until you have that opportunity to be, to be in front of people. So that's how I envision it, and I see the other tools that you get in a leadership, you have to be a role model because now I'm setting that example. So I see us, you know, one or two years from now, when that young person who came in, who is now a commander, and now he has freshmen, he has sophomores, that he's the role model. So when they're saying at 2:30, "We should leave campus," he's saying, "Wait a second. We all made a commitment. I made a commitment to tutor you. You made a commitment to be tutored by me." So that they see that leadership isn't just the military. Leadership isn't this. Leadership is what we do no matter who we're helping and how we're helping them. And I see it being the retention, the student. We know that students who belong to clubs, belong to activities, belong to sports, graduate. They stay in school. Look at your participation rate and look at your graduation rate. They mirror and they parallel each other. I see this being the same thing. I see this being students who are going to be involved in the club, they're going to see opportunities for leadership. They're not going to see that traditional where they need to fit into anything else, but they just want to lead and they want to be part of a team. That's kind of how I see it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. I appreciate that. Thank you.
And if I may just add to the previous comment as far as longevity, I know with Pine Bush, we've been there for the last 10 years, and we'll continue to be with them again until Principal Hotmire asks us to stop. So again, we're all about seeing the program in the future as far as being the principal's, because I already stated.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before we move on to the minutes, approval of the minutes, are there any students here from the participation in government class who need forms signed? I know the semester is ending, so if you want to come forward now, and only your own, no friends. We'll give you a couple minutes now to get board signatures.
I will board policy 1250 if I'm pleased.
Don't you have a card?
Because of mine.
What's your name? Joe or Joe? No. L Z?
Easy.
Easy. Thank you for your indulgence. Moving along, entertaining motion to accept the minutes from January 7. Are those in favor of accepting the minutes as written, January 7th, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. And we'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that board members would like pulled from the consent agenda? Mr. Michael.
Yes, sir. Actually, it's quite a few. B-68, 69, 70.
Okay, wait, wait, wait. It's my ears.
I'm sorry.
That's up to my ears.
Is that with B-68?
B-68.
Yeah, B-69, B-70.
B-69, B-70.
B-75, 75, 74, oh, 71, 72, and 73.
What? Do you, okay.
All of the ones.
All the bid awards?
All the bid awards.
All bid awards, okay. All bid awards. Thank you. Okay, any others? Any others? Okay, I will accept, entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda minus all the bid awards. B-68 or B-75?
They'll move.
Okay. A discussion? Mr. Shaughnessy?
On B-66 and B-67, the donations from Richard Stigbert, can you explain those a little more than, or can someone explain them? I mean, who?
This is in memory of Mrs. Stigbert, I believe.
Well, one of them is in memory of-
Diana Stigbert.
Is she, I, I don't know who that was.
She was a music teacher in Kingston High School for many, many years, and she may have taught, her husband taught at Bailey, taught art. She passed away a few years ago, and this is in her memory.
And then the, the second one was Althea Odell?
And?
On B-67?
B-67. I'm sorry. This is, again, this is her husband, who's made a generous donation, the amount of $1,000. She deposited it into the Althea S. Odell Art Scholarship Fund. So this is, this is courtesy of the Stigberts. Mr. Richard Stigbert in 66 made a donation of $1,000 for the Diana Stigbert Scholarship Fund. That's in memory of his wife. And B-67 is, again, Mr. Stigbert making a donation to the Althea S. Odell Art Scholarship Fund, and-
And is Althea Odell, is that someone who has an affiliation, had an affiliation with the school or?
I, I'm unfamiliar with her, so does anybody know Ms. Odell?
I'll thank them anyway.
Definitely thank them. I always have to accept scholarships for our students. Okay, so any more discussion? All right. Yes, Mr. Michael.
I have a question for Mr. Olson. I'm in discussion, actually. I see that we had eight, you know, projects out. In addition to this-
We have to move.
No, we're still on the record.
We, we haven't voted on the consent agenda minus all the-
Okay.
Do you have any other? No, okay. All right. So all those in favor of accepting the minutes from the 7th, is that it? No, I'm sorry, the consent agenda, minus the bid awards, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, now we'll move on to bid awards.
Can I, I believe we've just, one of the resolutions appointed Tino Montano as a curriculum specialist, curriculum specialist, I believe she too.
Mm-hmm.
I would congratulate you.
Thank you, Mr. Shaughnessy. We'd be terrible oversight. Okay, so we're moving on to bid awards, beginning with B-68.
Can we just move all of these as one?
Yeah, I think, yeah, we should make all of them together. I only have one question from Mr. Olson about, we have eight contracts out for bids. Do we get any bids out of all the local shop unions on any of these contracts?
Well, let me just, there, there, what I can tell you is that, as Dr. Padalino mentioned earlier, approximately 3.5 million of the 4.7 million dollars involved here are union, union, union companies. So I guess I can't, I can't really tell you if any of them are local union companies, but I could determine that and let you, and send an email to the board describing where the companies are from, if that would, if that's your question.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Shaughnessy?
So I had a question about these also. I mean, I think in the past, we've gotten summaries of bids, of the bids, of the various companies that make the bids and what the, and I don't think that that was available.
Yeah, I, I actually have those. I have a packet of those, but I don't have one for each of you. If you would like to each have one, we could scan those and distribute them if you'd like.
Put them on the, on our, on our BOE file.
Yeah, I'm sure we can.
As in SPD Ops.
Sure, we can do that.
Also, I think B-60, B-74, I think in the title, I think that should be EWC-1 instead
Yeah, I think, I think you are correct about that, Mr. Shaughnessy, since that is an electrical contract.
And is Duchess Mechanical, is there a misspelling on Duchess Mechanical, B-71?
I believe Duchess was misspelled, yes.
Do we make those corrections? Can I move those corrections? Has an amendment?
Okay, we are entertaining now through, maybe a second to your motion to amend it, correct? Or no?
Well, unless you want an unanimous consent.
We haven't moved the first one.
You haven't moved them yet.
No, we did.
We did. We moved them.
Not B-68, I didn't have it.
Yeah, we did.
No, we moved them all as, we sent them as a group.
Together.
We were discussing it.
Oh, we didn't.
I did not take, take note of the first year.
Okay, who made the motion? Just now, to move the bid awards.
I think that Mr. Michael made it.
Mr. Michael.
Yes.
And then who seconded it?
The last one.
Okay, we need a second. Okay. All right, we've had discussion. We have an amendment now to language and spelling, correct?
Right. Technical corrections.
Okay, so can we move the bid awards with the corrections noted by Mr. Shaughnessy? Duchess Mechanical and, yeah, one instead of two. All right. Okay. All right, all those in favor of the bid awards with the corrections, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And now we're on to the Board of Education, and I know there was a meeting of the Diversity Cadre on the 20th, correct?
Correct.
And Mr. Padalino and Robert Childs report.
Well, I'll start by, you know, we had a very lively discussion, good turnout, and what we determined, it was sort of a brainstorming session, and at the end of a long period of time, a lot of give and take, we ended up deciding that what we would do is to, some of the members of the cadre would determine some reading material that would be good to set a tone for all teachers in the various buildings.
And as Robert Childs said, we did, we had a long and circular conversation that started at one place and then ended up back where, where we started, I think, to talk about how we were going to work for with, with the goals of the Diversity Cadre, and I think everyone walked away with a little bit of homework, and my homework was to find, to come back and report to the Diversity Cadre what resources we could bring to bear, whether it be time, money, people, to assist us in what really our goal is. Two years ago when we started, we had the goal of getting training for people. We trained the Board of Education. We trained the, we did, we did inclusion training for the administration. We've done inclusion training for the support staff, and we've had some sporadic training for our faculty, for our teaching staff, and we're looking to make that, A, more universal for everyone to be involved in the inclusion training, and, and also to institutionalize this, so it's something that we do, something that we are, not what we do, I should say. So we are, my homework is to come back to the committee with, with some ideas of what can we bring for as districts as far as resources, time during superintendent's conference days, release time, you know, consultants, people, maybe we need some help to come in and help, you know, some people to come in and help us with this, those kinds of things. So that's my homework. So they have to get books and I have to get resources.
Well, I have a question about the books. Will these become part of professional libraries in the schools? Is that the intention?
Well, I, I think that what the intent was to choose something that has been impactful based upon what some of the people on the cadre have read and they have really changed their perspective on, on things and make some recommendations. Once we have those recommendations made, then it'd be a determination by the superintendent- Once we have those recommendations made, then it'd be a determination by the superintendent as to how they will be utilized, whether it would be in a professional development class or whether they'll just have everybody reading them or how it's going to be done.
Well, that was my next question. Was one of the strategies to have everyone read them and then discuss them? As a faculty or community, could be parents and teachers and?
Well, I think a lot of things were kicked around, but that was one of them. It was necessary to have not only teachers involved, but parents involved, teachers involved, students. And so, that would be something that would be worked out once they determine what we're going to, what would be a good material to be used.
Thank you. Any other questions about the Diversity Cadre?
When is the, when is the next meeting, will this group have a meeting regularly?
Yeah, I think the fourth Tuesday of the month.
The fourth you did it on?
In the meeting, okay.
Is this you?
Yes.
Okay, and the Deed Stadium Commission? Mr. Michael.
Okay, I have two notes to make from the December meeting first. At the last meeting, Commissioner May presented the manager's valuation. And Mr. Tavariis is doing an excellent job as managing the stadium right now. And also, the commission has elected the new commissioner for the new year very unanimously. Mrs. Woodard is the new chairman for this year. Congratulations.
She's very excited.
Last week's meeting, we had a meeting at the City Hall. Dr. Padalino was present and also the mayor of Kingston. We had a very constructive, constructive discussion, open-minded. And we had all agree that it would be for the best interest of the city and our district as a whole, as a community, to, if we'll be able to take control of the stadium, the operation of the stadium. And I also make my point to some commissioners and some of the all-time city residents that the stadium is not going nowhere. The stadium will be changed, the deed, the name of the deed will be changed if we ever take over the control. But the stadium will always be for the community, for our students, it'll be used for everybody. There are some old-time citizens in the city that they feel like it still needs something from them. And that's just not going to happen. It will be just on a piece of paper, the deed will be the district's own. But it's a long road to do that. If we decide to take that direction, Dr. Padalino presented some ideas, how are we going to do that before we take ownership of the stadium? And everybody agreed with Dr. Padalino and I'm sure he already started doing their work with a device plan, how we'll be able to take over ownership of the stadium. I don't know if Dr. Padalino wanted to add something with that?
Yeah, I think, we had, we did have a long conversation, again, it's kind of like we talked about earlier, brainstorming conversation. We all know that there's something that we need to do with Deed Stadium. We look at the financials and we know we're just keeping our head above water and not being able to do any of the improvements. I think what we heard was some discussion around the table of what are the different options? What are the different things we can do? As far as the school district, being able to take over without, I think there's a lot of different things we need to throw on the table. A lot of things we need to discuss, a lot of things we need to discuss with the mayor and the city before we could entertain the, you know, the school district taking over. Our position isn't that much better than the city's. And there's some other, you know, outside issues we have to look at. Would there be a possibility for the school district to have more access to funding than the city? Those are things that I need to come back to the commission and let them know. But I think there's, you know, there's something that needs to be done. We know that there's, you know, it's a drastic times come for drastic measures and then we have to start taking some drastic measures. The mayor and I will meet between now and the next Deed Stadium Commission to discuss how we see things. And we'll work through it. Again, we're all looking for whatever's best for the stadium, what's best for the community and the best way to keep Deed Stadium as an asset to our community. And that's an important thing, but it's going to be a struggle over the next few years. I'd say, as we send the commission, we're probably in good shape for a few years. But when that turf needs to be replaced and we need to do work in the locker rooms and the bathrooms, which people know we need that now, we have to figure out how we're going to finance that. So, there's, there's a lot of people, a lot of strong feelings about Deed Stadium and we found that out. So, we want to work through, make sure that everyone is working together, understanding that Deed Stadium is an asset for everyone in the community. It's, we're going to have a long process and a lot of conversations about what we can do.
Any questions for Mr. Michael or Dr. Padalino? Mr. Shaughnessy?
Well, just one comment about taking, you know, if the school district were to take it over, I would be very, very much opposed to changing the name of the stadium from Deed Stadium. You know, it's named after the only Congressional Medal of Honor winner or holder in Kingston throughout the history of 100, 200, 150 years, going back to the Civil War, 200 years that that has been awarded. And if you take time to read the Presidential Proclamation that's on the monument stone at the entrance to the stadium, it's, you know, it's really a moving story of Sergeant Deeds. And so, I would, you know, I think you said something about changing the name, is that right?
No.
But anyway.
No, I was saying the name of the deed, I was talking about the deed. Who actually owns, whose names are the deed of the stadium, not the name.
I think, if I can comment, I think, let's not put the cart in front of the horse, you know, as far as the naming of the stadium. We have to work out the problems with the stadium first, but I don't think there's anyone that has any intention of changing the name of the stadium, no matter who owns it.
No, no, I don't think so, yeah.
No, that, it rises its head occasionally. The sec, I have another, I have a question. And I'm certainly glad that Ms. Woodard is taking over his chair. Maybe she can. I looked on the, on the website, there's, there were financial statements from 2014, 2011 through 2014. And I presume that those were the actual, those supposed to be the actual financial statements, they're not budget. But I was struck by the fact that in each, on each year, the income was exactly equal to the expenses to the penny. As if it were, you know, how did, you know, you make a budget and income equals expenses, but at the end of the year when you report on it, I mean, there has to be a penny difference.
Sure. Do you want to come to Mike, so?
If he, if what you're describing that's on the website was part of the packet for the commission, I believe that Mr. Barrett provided copies of the last several weeks' budget and that's why they have downed the budget.
Okay.
The financial might have been in there for the prior year, the last year, and the difference would be just a couple of thousand dollars, so.
I didn't notice that they were designated as budgets, but maybe, maybe they were and I'm wrong in my comment. So.
Any other questions? Okay, and I'm going to go to Mrs. Collins, I'm a policy committee.
The policy committee is moving two policies tonight for adoption. Policy 1900, school, family, community partnership policy, and policy 8645, information security breach and notification. Shall we do that first?
Just a question, is it 8635 or 8645? Here's two different ones.
I don't know, I'm looking, where's, it says on.
I think it was 8635 on the last.
Yeah, you're right, that's a typo, I don't.
We can check in a minute.
8635.
35.
So, change the.
Thank you for catching that, Ms. Shear.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
That's fine. So, should we move that now before I? So, can I move that? I'll move that.
Absolutely.
Right?
I'll second.
Thank you.
You have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to answer, Mr. Shaughnessy, about the, I have the copies, ladies.
Oh, wait, wait, we have a motion on the floor about the policies. Can we commit to that in Old Business? Thank you. Okay, we have a motion, second. Any discussion? Yes.
I have a question about policy 1900, is that where we are?
Yes.
So, in policy 1900, which is about school and family, community partnerships, it talks about that the Board of Education will ensure the development and implementations of programs and activities, the procedures that encourage and support the education of parents and students. And then specifically about Title I. I remember in the BLT plans, which I know they're not called that anymore, but I cannot remember what they're called, that each school that had family and community involvement components to them. So, I imagine that's how we're meeting that requirement. Correct? There's also provision in here about the evaluation of those opportunities and parent involvement. And I'm wondering how we're going to meet that requirement.
Go ahead.
Well, through the building leadership, through our school progress plans, we have evaluations built into all those plans as well as the plan to do the, to do. We also have the parent forms that are put out now. The evaluation of those is one of the things we have to discuss. We started them last year, we're doing them this year, and it's one of the things I was going to.
The parent forms?
Yeah, the parent forms.
What's that?
Parent form.
Oh, like you mean the ones that we convene District Wyatt, okay. And I also thought, I know that through the, I don't know the acronym of this process either, but like the state process where the coming to.
DTSD.
Thank you. That we are developing school-level teams and parents will be part of those teams to talk about the review of the schools, correct? I'm imagining if that can be a vehicle for this kind of thing also.
Although, I mean, it's hard to, it seemed like a weird answer, but all those are built into that whole process and the evaluation part is built into that whole process. So, it's, that is really how we guide the entire district through the DTSD process and, you know, the district leadership and building leadership teams of the DCPs and the SEPs. And so, all those things are built in there to be in compliance with our policy, which is pretty much it.
No, I see how it all builds on itself. Okay, and so, once this, that process is finished, the board will get a report about that?
And we are going through building level and district level reviews right now.
Right now, no, I know.
Which will give us feedback on those as well.
Okay.
So, that's, you know.
As long as it's in front of us, always.
You will see our reviews. We're doing, we're doing them right now. I mean, some are self-reviews, some are state reviews. The self-reviews, I guarantee you will see in a timely manner. The state reviews, I guarantee you won't.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? 1900 or 8635? Okay, we have a motion, second. All those in favor of approving policy amendments to school, parent, community partnership and the information security breach and notification policies, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
Can I just stay in the chair? We had to postpone our last meeting because it was snow day. We met on the 16th, so just briefly, we deferred policy 5110 to our next meeting. Then our next meeting is going to be Friday, February 6th. We're going to have our attorney join us and we're going to begin our discussions on discipline policy. Also, at our last meeting, 6700, the policy, we got some very good feedback from Mr. Olson, Ms. Legak, and we also discussed policy 5500 with some input from our lawyers as well. Yeah.
Thank you. Question?
February 6th at 9:30?
Nine, we need, I have nine.
Nine.
Okay, and at Seoni?
In the board room. Any other questions? Okay, and we'll move on to Old Business. Now, you have a resolution under Old Business. It's Resolution 2014 BOE 48. Whereas Xena Four Corners LLC purchaser of the Xena School Building has requested additional time for the closing on the Xena School. They have resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes extending the date of the closing of title on the Xena School Building and property located at 1700 Stockill Road, Woodstock, New York, until April 21st, 2015, and authorizes the board president to execute an amendment to the contract of sale dated May 2014, a copy of which shall be incorporated by reference within the minutes of this meeting. Are there any motions?
I'll move.
Discussion? Mr. Shaughnessy?
I plan to vote against this resolution. It was a year ago, maybe today, or yesterday, it was the second meeting in January of 2014, that we approved the bid for Xena, to sell Xena to this group. And I believe the, the closing then was scheduled to be within 60 days. And now we are here a year later and we're extending it another three months. And I didn't vote for that resolution in the first place, so I'm not going to vote for extending it either. I think I'll be very surprised if there is a closing by April, April 21st.
Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor of Resolution 2014 BOE 48, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Any extensions? Motion carries. All right, any other Old Business? Old Business? I have a bit of Old Business, it's sort of like a new business. KHS 100 Committee met on, actually, last Friday. And there are a lot of things in the works right now, but there is a newsletter up on the website. So, if you want to know what's going on and what events are planned for that weekend, please access that. And there'll be more information to follow very shortly. There's also, I think I called attention to it at the last meeting, but if I have not, there's a PowerPoint presentation by Mrs. Dana Brett. She's been, she's a member of the Board of Directors of Friends of Historic Kingston. And she has been presenting luncheon series on Kingston buildings, Kingston district buildings. So, there's a nice history, actually, of the high school and all of the principals and the superintendents up on the website. So, I encourage you to take a look at it. Nice photos. It's a nice walk-through of history. Any other Old Business? It's a new business. New business, Dr. Jacobowitz?
This is kind of old and new business, but at the last meeting, we talked about the Ulster County School Boards Association Legislative Action Committee posting petitions on local district websites to eliminate the GEA and our petition, the Gap Elimination Act. So, our petition is up and it's online, it's on the website. And I hope that everybody will sign it and send it to as many people as they can.
Thank you. Mr. Shaughnessy?
I'm not sure if it's Old Business, New Business. We had in our board packet a three-page summary of multiple pathways to graduation, which was adopted by the Board of Regents on September 15th of 2014. Have we had a, I don't recall that we've had a presentation on this at the board level.
We have not.
Could we schedule that so that the public can be informed through viewing the board meeting of what these graduation changes, requirements, changes to graduation requirements are?
Sooner rather than later?
Sure, sooner rather.
We may have some more changes.
I mean, I don't expect it today, but.
Yeah, with what's happening at the state level, there may be more changes yet to come.
Well, with regard to the graduation requirements or?
Well, not for this year's graduating class, certainly not, but, you know.
I mean, I don't even know when these are, when do these go into effect?
They've been approved yet, haven't they?
They're approved today, I believe.
Today?
Actually, I defer, Mrs. Bondville may have the answer to that.
What was adopted by the Board of Regents?
They were, right, they were approved on January 12th.
By the Board of Regents?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's going to be it for this year? Yes. Yes.
We got an email and we always get updates about the small-city schools and the trial. And I'm wondering, I saw that we are testifying. I'm wondering if we have a date for that testimony?
We don't have, and you stole one thing off my head. The trial started today. Opening statements were made today by both sides. We are middle, I think we're the fourth school district to go, so I'll be testifying for the Kingston City School District. We're not sure when that will be, it'll all depend on how, you know, how they move along through the process. So, they're telling me. So they're telling me they're thinking probably middle to end of February that I would be testifying.
Can you tell us when you know?
Yes, yes. I wasn't allowed to go to opening statements because I'm a witness for them, so I wanted to go.
Any other new business? Mr. Shaughnessy?
Just a request, Governor Cuomo gave his combined state, the state and budget presentation today. I didn't listen to all of it, but there were some significant requests that he intends to make concerning public education. I wonder if we could put a summary of those on our website, or so that people in the community might not see it otherwise, can be aware.
It's already, Mrs. Heidecker's already putting together a summary, an article on the state of the state as a, you know, as far as education concerns, and so we'll probably have a story up there tomorrow.
And will we not have further clarification at the budget forum on the 29th?
We will have more discussion as part of the 29th.
You do commercial for that.
Yes, we'll have further discussion on the budget forum on the 29th, which is at Sione, 6 o'clock, so we will be able to discuss that more, but we will have an article.
Thank you.
Written by Miss Heather.
Thank you. Any other new business? Board member announcements. Mr. Shaughnessy?
In your board packet was a letter from Alan Pendergaard, CEO of the Mental Health Association, announcing the bouquets for anomalies for mental health. So I'm now on the board of the Mental Health Association, so if you'll allow me to put a plug in for this, if you'd like a bouquet of flowers delivered to your, on February 19th, you can contact Chris Decker at the.
Actually, you can let me know if someone in the building is.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. Any other board member announcements?
I just have a few announcements. First of all, I do want to address the policy committee. We have, we do have, on February 6th, as I refer the policy committee, we do have David Shaw coming to discuss with us our code of conduct and the topic of restorative justice, which is something that the policy committee has wanted to look into, so we give us, give us really the legal ins and outs of our code of conduct and how we could apply restorative justice model to our, to our disciplinary program. So that's on February 6th. There's a parent workshop on the 10th at Chambers, February 10th at Chambers, from 6:30 to 8 o'clock, and that the topic of that, that's our second of the year, and that's going to be data-driven instruction, DDI, will be the topic of that, of that parent Also, just to, we had to cancel our retreat last week, so unfortunately, I'm not able to get very favorable dates from our, from our facilitator. Her next two dates of availability are March 23rd and March 30th, both Mondays, March 30th is the Monday of the spring break, which surely creates a problem, March 23rd, so that leads us to March 23rd. I usually, I kind of have two choices, either we can think about the March 23rd, or I can seek out another facilitator that may be available sooner.
Personally, maybe another facilitator available sooner, because that was one of our goals, we would have more board retreats. I think it's important.
Lastly, since we have, obviously, we recognized Mr. Kane here today, that leaves an opening, Kingston City School District opening at the Bozey's Board of Education. Earlier in the week, we had kind of sent out, looking for some ideas, we approached a few people, and we also approached Kristin Yule, who used to be a member of the Kingston City School District Board of Education, and I spoke to her earlier in the week, and she had expressed that the board was interested in nominating her, she would be interested in filling that position.
I also have to, when I opened up an email, because I was alerted to a new email coming in at quarter to five, I discovered an email from Mr. Shaughnessy, who is also interested in the Bozey's Board seat. So we have two people, and he would like to be nominated as well, so need to be thinking about that. I know they've both been very active with the board, Mr. Shaughnessy's a past president, he's been on many, many committees, Kristin is a board member for several years, has been on many, many committees, so I think they're both eminently qualified.
That's all I have.
All right.
So, so on January 29th, is it at 6 o'clock, we have the budget forum at Sione?
Correct.
And just in terms of the next policy committee meeting, if we would be able to get any information assembled for the committee members and include it in the next board packet, so that we have a, if David Shaw's going to be attending, if he has any information of.
On the restorative justice?
Restorative justice.
Yes, in our emails today, we did get the policy from Buffalo School District on restorative justice, which is an elective, it's a voluntary restorative justice policy, so if you, if you haven't had an opportunity to check your email, district's email, please do, and the Buffalo policy is available there, free to be viewed, but yes, certainly.
And I said both the Buffalo policy, or not even the policy, their program on restorative justice, as well as their, their code of, their actual code of conduct, they aren't the same, you know, they work, they work parallel, but I've sent them to the board for your review.
Thank you.
Okay, any other board member announcements? Well, I would like to say, Reverend Childs, I don't think I'm going to jump in here, but Reverend Childs was an honoree at the Martin Luther King Luncheon at the Hillside on Monday, and it was attended by several of the board members, and it was lovely, the children did a presentation of the writing that they had done for the book, Heroes in Our Backyard, which is now available, it's got a Library of Congress number, we learned, and I think they're available for sale. I think they almost sold out the other day, we had, we had quite a few people bought them.
They did, right, but they didn't publish more.
They're going to publish more, but it was very nice, essays written about community heroes, relatives, friends, teachers, babysitters, very nice, so it was a lovely event. And Reverend Costin was also there, Mrs. Lau, Mrs. Collins.
And personally, I appreciate their attendance, it's very good. That program is one that has been going on for 22 years, and the main emphasis of the King's Kids Program is to bring children, and many of them who don't have the support in the family like they should have, and to bring them in to raise their expectation of what they're able to accomplish. And it's really been pretty amazing, because they'll put on a couple drama presentations a year, just one of the things they do, and they utilize any child that comes, they're going to put them in, and some of the parents have been totally blown away by the fact that their child, sometimes that may have some learning disabilities or whatever, they find that they're able to do way more than what they ever thought they could, because they're not turned away, and their expectations are raised, and they do a wonderful job. So they do not only the drama presentation, but they also do things such as the book, the whole concept there was to get them to know that you could write, you're able to write, you can even have a book published, which gives them something that they can think about, and they have a summer event that they occur, which is really tremendous, and they take the children, and they say, you like sitcoms, let's pick them apart, let's see how they are developed. And each child then does all aspects of developing a sitcom, and they video it, they do the acting, they write it, and it's pretty amazing what they do with the children. So I was, I was very pleased, I've served on that board for all of the 22 years, and I was grateful for the, for the acknowledgement.
Any other board member announcements? Okay, seeing no hands, we return to the portion of the agenda where we welcome public participation. I need you, if you're limited to two minutes. So is there anyone interested in addressing the board? And congratulations, again.
Thank you. I just want respectfully to say thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak to all of the members here. I fully intend to support whoever fills my 10th in the classroom as a professional coach, and I am really looking forward to, I'm going to use that buzzword for tonight, becoming a visitor. I've been in the same room at Miller for 15 years, so even tonight, looking at the little hug me sign on my side, that's not really something I see too often at Miller, so it's just refreshing, and I'm really looking forward to it, supporting students by supporting teachers, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, anyone else who'd like to address the board? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second.
Second?
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.